Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:30. Is there any comment from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to the chair's report. I would like to just mention that Carrie is at town meeting in Concord tonight, and Ed will not be here tonight. Yes. Yeah, I'm just going to go to the -- but go ahead.
So I attended -- it was like a telecon that the Department of Education, DESI, held regarding how they were going to finance the high-quality career pathways. And they went through a long PowerPoint. There were 92 people on the phone call, one of whom was Michelle Roach. I saw her name go by. So I shared my notes with her, and we still don't have enough information.
Okay. Thank you, Alice. Ford, do you just want to talk quickly about the advocacy day? Just mention that at the State House?
Oh, I forgot about it.[77.81][77.81](laughter) Dave, why don't you talk about it, and I'll chime in?
All right.
I mean, I remember being there.[85.61][85.61](laughter)
You may remember we got an invitation or announcement of advocacy day for vocational education that was going to take place at the State House. Well, Ford went, and I decided, well, I'll go to, and we happened to bump into each other there. The -- there are a number of people who -- there were people -- there were, I guess, school committee people and also staff members from a number of vocational schools in Massachusetts, as well as legislators, senators, and representatives. And the bottom -- I think a couple of students also spoke. The bottom line that I came away with, which was like a common theme among the presenters and the legislators, was gaining more access to the school -- to vocational schools. That was like -- I don't think it was the theme of the day, but it -- many people spoke about that, about increasing access and making sure people in communities know about the wonderful vocational schools that are in this -- in the Commonwealth. But also so that students have access to schools and are not prevented from doing so. Then if you wanted to, you could meet your legislator. I hadn't contacted mine beforehand, so I didn't do that. But that was sort of the point, if I understand. There were presentations, and then you'd go off and meet your legislators. There was some wonderful, fantastic food prepared by one of the -- maybe two of the vocational schools, but somebody forgot to bring plates because there were no plates. And it was just spectacular food, but got these little, you know, tea napkins, and it was a little hard to eat the sloppy food. Some of the so-called sloppy food, but it was -- they did a beautiful job. And it's a very -- it was a very worthwhile activity.
Now I'm remembering what happened. You know, access was the issue, which was interesting. A lot of people were talking about access, and I'm sitting there thinking, okay, access. We have our access issues. And you have the -- some of the legislators talking about it, but they're not willing to do anything about it. And then you have the issue of Medco kids. You have a Medco kid who's in Dover, for example. They can't come to Minuteman. They have to either go to Boston, or they can't go -- I mean, it's just not even right the way they treat people. And I have said to my state rep, who I saw last week, this is just plain wrong, and it's the Department of Education that's the problem. I'm not sure, and I'll go on record, I'm not sure they're interested in educating children. It's all political. The whole thing is political. And you saw a lot of superintendents hanging around, and they sort of stuck together. And I'm not sure they really believe that, you know, access is a big issue. I think they're protecting their own school and not worrying about the kids. And I think that's what's missing. So I feel very strongly, the Department of Education, and I think what I heard down there is the kids are secondary. And nobody will say that, but I'm going to say it. I also had an amusing experience. I was looking for Denise Garlick, who is my rep, who I had another issue to talk to her about. So I went down to her office, and I was told, oh, she's not there. She -- her office is up on the first floor because she's now Vice Chair of Ways and Means in the House. So I go up to that office, and they say, oh, no, she's not here. She's downstairs. So, you know, now how do I find her? And the office is sitting there like they don't know. Well, she was in New Bedford at a meeting, and I was able to find that out by texting her and saying, where are you? And so it's just sort of a comical relief that you get down there. But Dave is absolutely right. The highlight was the food. And I didn't need a plate. I just picked it up.[331.12][331.12](laughter)
Okay. Jim, you were talking about STEM?
STEM, right. And I found myself at a similar but different conference around that same time. And it was sponsored by the State House News Service and held at the State Street Bank. And its focus was on STEM. But really, when I got there, I realized the question was really on trying to get more diverse students into STEM. And so it's the same kind of access stuff. And what was really notable about that was there was a lot of turnout there from the private sector. And there's private sector money out there in Boston that's looking to make sure that there's a stronger pipeline of diverse students going into STEM. And it's just something to keep in mind about how that can fit into our strategy for access here, too.
Anyone else? I have a couple of other little things, too. Anyone else? Another one is that Lexington each year presents awards, a group of outstanding seniors at the high school and a group of outstanding seniors at Minuteman High School. And they're presented with an award at the opening session of town meeting. And there were four -- I don't remember their names, but there were four students from Minuteman who were presented. And again, town meeting gets the feeling that they are Lexington students, the Minuteman students and Lexington High School students. I really love that, that they're all presented on the same evening. And George Clement did a terrific job of talking about each of the four awardees. It's what he said about them and how he said it. It was just full of enthusiasm, and you could see the kids were just beaming, and the audience was -- the town meeting members were just, I think, enthralled by what they were hearing about Minuteman kids, also about Lexington kids. But a couple of people came up to me and said they thought that George had done a better -- a really terrific job, better than the Lexington High School principal. And I don't think it was just to flatter me at all. I think the Lexington High School principal, I thought, did a fine job, too. But George was -- did a sort of a really special job, and the students were just wonderful. One of the girls, by the way, is going to the Air Force Academy from Minuteman, and that got an "oooh," you know, from the -- from town meeting. He built up to it. It was just -- it was just -- Metco happened to be for a girl who came through the Medco program, you know, her sacrifice and all the stuff she had to do to get to school every day. And here she is, you know, going to the Air Force Academy. Ah, I mean, it was just wonderful. But I compliment still the students and Minuteman producing these kids, the work the kids did to get there.
Do you like the student's names?
Oh, okay. Noah -- I may not pronounce him correctly. Noah Giva or Geva? Giva, G-E-V-A?
Yeah. It's G.
Noah Giva, Jayla Marical, Mike Merrick, and Liz Kinghorn Whitman. And I know them from Lexington. But -- and her brother, older brother, went here, too. But they were great, and what George said about them was just right on special. Also, Saturday night, where were you, Dave? Saturday night, I saw The Odd Couple. I usually see you there.
Yeah. I was too busy settling my daughter back from Puerto Rico.
Okay. Saw The Odd Couple, the student presentation. It was female -- it was the female Odd Couple. So the main protagonists were females, were women. It was delightful, wonderful play, wonderful play, yes.
Dave, was your daughter down with the Minuteman crew?
Yeah, that's right.
Their Facebook presence about, you know, what was -- every day they had a film on there of what was going on. It was terrific what they were doing.
It was good. The feedback that I got from my daughter and some of the girls when they got back were tremendous opportunity, a great trip. So they went to Puerto Rico for the community service.
Oh, good. Yeah.
I'll expect that probably at the next, we will give us an increase, but on the inside, skinny, it was great.
Very good, very good. Oh, yeah, two other quick things. I talked -- I brought up at the officers' or mentioned at the officer's meeting the notion of perhaps for one of our school committee meetings next year, we can go to one of our -- another town in the district, just to so, you know, show the flag. And I talked to Jennifer about it, mentioned, how about starting with Lancaster? Have a school committee meeting next year, probably in the fall in Lan --[638.12][638.12](laughter) Do people say Lancaster or Lancaster? Got to get it right.
I think it's a clear phrase, Lancaster.
Okay, Lancaster. But I think -- I thought it was a good -- it'd be a good idea, just to -- people are always coming here. We're going to go out and --
Is it so long as Minuteman pays for our trip?
Of course. There's a precedent for that, as you know. So we'll do that.
I have to go by Snowcat.
Is it good for a town like here?[662.12][662.12](laughter)
Anyway, we'll talk -- we will talk more about that and look for a so-called appropriate meeting to do it so that it would make it -- well, make sense to go to another town. But I think it's a nice idea personally to do that. Okay, see some heads nodding. So I chose Lancaster, Lancaster, which is the furthest town. And Jennifer said she would work on --
If you want to go to Belmont, you better hurry up.[694.12][694.12](laughter)
That's right. Anyway, that's all I had tonight. And moving on to the superintendent's report, there was nothing -- as I said, Ed is not here. We were -- there was nothing to be reported under goal number one. But under goal number two, you notice that -- you may notice that there's a revised agenda. And the first revision is that under goal number two, we're not -- the original agenda said to vote to establish a non-resident tuition policy. We're not voting on that. We're going to -- we're going to vote to approve the letter to Commissioner Jeffrey Riley dated April 9, 2009, which is in your packet. That's what --
It's revised.
Yeah. And also, the revised -- oh, since it came -- you got it in your packet. Jim recommended that particular -- the paragraph that's highlighted in yellow, that it be italicized, but it won't go -- it'll just be italicized when it goes to Jeff, if we all -- if we approve to Commissioner Riley. It won't go in yellow. That's just so you'll see where that change was. So just a change in italics, no language. So do I hear a motion to approve the letter? A second? Does someone ask someone a second? Jennifer? Any questions or comments? Alice?
That should also be quoted.
That paragraph?
I think that's what he said, yeah.
Did he --
Yeah, no, that is a quote.
Okay.
That the use of italics is sort of similar to the quote of the legislature.
Okay. But maybe we should do that.
That wasn't -- it's fine.
We could do both. So did you get that? Julia, we'll put quotation marks around the yellowed paragraph, the italicized paragraph. Thank you, Alice. Anything else?
I have another question.
Yes.
Our secretary is --
Just got to the chair and the vice chair.
Yeah, we discussed that. And Pam?
I --
We were happy to include her name, but Pam thought that it was better -- I don't know. There would be -- okay, just better with this one.
Well, I think that we felt it -- of course, it was important to have Ed sign it, and having four signatures is a lot of signatures. I mean, I am fine to sign it. It was just a, you know, trying to streamline.
Just wanted to make sure you didn't --
I had nothing left out.
No. She was originally there.
We actually had a whole discussion about it.
Yeah.
And thought, you know, we can make this simple. And also because part of it is the people who are signing are the ones that are requesting the meeting. And again, having four of us go to a meeting is a lot. So we thought that the chair and the vice chair made sense, along with the superintendent.
Okay. All right. Any other question or comment? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Abstain of the nine zero. Thank you very much. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Goal number three, nothing there. Moving on.
Two B.
I'm sorry?
I have a question about Dave.
Oh, two B, sorry. Yeah. I'm sorry. Kevin, I think you were going to mention it. It's in your packet. It's in the packet. I think, Kevin, you -- thank you. You were going to mention that.
Yes, you'll see in the packet, there was a letter that was submitted to the governor from our legislative delegation, urgent release of the funds for the photovoltaic canopy project that we were -- that was approved in the Capitol Bond Bill that requires re-lease by the governor.
Do we have any knowledge of what the senator is doing as a follow-up? The letter's been sent, but is somebody making a phone call to push on the governor, specifically she should? But I would hope that there's a strong follow-up to get his attention.
I'll have to check on that.
Oh, I also wanted to mention, under that, I had a note to myself that Ed, Dr. Aquilin is going to meet -- is going to meet with Jeff Riley on April 22. That was the earliest he could get an appointment. So he's meeting with Commissioner Riley, basically about access. Access, not about the other topic, although he's going to sort of mention that, but it won't be the focus of the discussion. So Ed is meeting on the 22nd.
But is that going to be followed up with a meeting?
Yeah, and our meeting will come after that. We're sure --
Yep.
It doesn't take the place or replace ours.
Dave, I mean, we --
We make reference to it.
Back in the last paragraph on the first page, we made -- we made it clear that we're, you know, this is a second meeting that we're asking for.
Right.
And, I mean, Ed is not here to speak for himself, but I think at the officers' meeting, we, you know, we saw this as a coordinated thing and not a competition thing. And I think in this meeting, some of the case for setting the tuitions is also going to be supportive of changing the access. I mean, it's going back to really sort of demonstrating the damage that was done by the 2015 rules and that we need -- that we need relief on both fronts.
Alice?
This is not the whole delegation, the legislative delegation?
Mm-hmm.
I know the legislature's here, so I don't know if you could ask it.
Yep, I don't know either. I know a letter -- did we all get it? Maybe we all got a letter. Ed sent out a copy of a letter from the legislators asking other people to sign on. I don't know exactly what happened.
Is she active? Active? Oh, is she? Oh, okay.
So I don't know.
Yeah, just now, I did --
Where the very eastern, you know, air meets.
I see both of Lexington's. Michelle Sacolo is new this year, she's representing, replacing Jeff -- Jay Kaufman. And Michael Barrett is our senator that represents Lexington. So they -- at least they signed on. So I don't know the answer to that. I could ask Michelle and get back to you. Did others sign on? I know she had a -- there was a deadline in the letter. Do you want to -- are you interested in your particular representative, Senator?
I think if they say there are the legislative delegation, I should include all of the legislators.
Okay.
So that -- I don't -- am I missing -- oh, no.
Yep. And, I mean, this is the second time a similar letter is -- one was sent last year. Last year's letter and this year's letter were not -- I mean, neither letter was signed by our state senator, Will, you know, Will Brownsberger, and, you know.
Okay.
But it is what it is.
I'll contact Michelle Sacolo and ask her what she knows about it, and I'll send out information to you from what she says. Goal number three, there's no update. Goal four, Pam, enrollment task force update.
Well, at our enrollment task force, we actually had some good news in really reviewing the number of applications. At that point, where we were meeting on the 27th, we had a total of 197 applications. As of the officers' meeting, let me write, you know, at the very end of, a little bit after that, you know, we're up to 253 applications.
I thought 197, 253.
I know. So am I making that number up? I thought the latest number --
Jack Dillon's going to give us an update on that.
Yeah, total, 253.
Not that much.
Jack, do you want to give your update while interject here?
Yep. These are actually today's numbers. So we have a grand total of 199 applications in district and a grand total of 80 applicants out of district, for a total of 279, and that's of -- as of today.
199 and the other figure?
The other one was 80 out of district.
Eighty out.
Correct.
Comparison of last year.
Way above. Not even a comparison.
130 or 75.
Probably about that.
I think the numbers that we had at our meeting was in all of last year, it was up to 47 applications.
We're way above where we should have been last year, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alice?
That are out of district, how many of those are prohibited from attending because of the regs?
I'd have to go through them all, but probably about 25.
That was my recollection when I was reviewing. I thought I saw 23.
Yeah, 23, 25, yeah.
Okay.
Those are 25 that cannot come.
Correct.
But the others, they're still law.
Yep.
Okay. Pam?
So we're, as you can tell, we're seeing a significant increase and, you know, really want to acknowledge all the hard work that the administration's been doing to, you know, really be increasing, you know, those application numbers. A couple of other things that we discussed. At our last school committee meeting, we approved a middle school access document outlining sort of the minimum of what we would like schools, our member schools, to provide in terms of access to eighth-grade students, pending some, you know, technical revisions, which we did those technical revisions at our enrollment task force. So I believe the administration was going to -- what we discussed at that meeting was the administration's going to draft a letter so that we could then send -- start sending that document out that would be going to the school committee chairs and the superintendents of each of our towns. And the other piece that we had talked about, you know, a key new addition to the admissions team that we've talked about in part of our meetings, is the addition of a communications director. And Ed was reporting that he has received really a significant number of applications for that position. So it looks like, you know, that it was one of the, you know, good options for us in terms of moving forward with the communications director.
Jeff?
No, no, no. You got it all. But with that many applications, how are we going to handle acceptance letters? You can't accept all those kids. You can't accept 250 kids if they're all going to come.
157 per class. If you do, you're going to have to start knocking down those future classes.
What was that?
Their yield is 65 percent.
Right. We've talked over the past couple of weeks of probably putting a cap on it this year at about 200.
200 in terms of what?
Students.
Students.
You have to.
I mean, 200 bodies next fall or 200?
That's the hope.
Yep.
That would be the cap.
Ford?
No, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Pam?
Yeah, they won't all come, but yeah, yeah.
That's the target rate.
Yeah. Yep.
Pam?
I mean, if you just take the numbers, the 274 was it that we've received to date?
279, yeah.
Well, then I'm two or three off. If you go with the typical 65 percent acceptance rate, that's 178 in, you know, in the freshman class.
Your acceptance rate went up, then you might have an issue.
Well, and that's one of the things that we talked about, you know, will that yield number increase with the increase of interest? I mean, we, of course, don't have that information yet.
Just to give you a quick update, too. Today's the 9th, and typically the applications slow down. The 1st of May, we've received seven applications in just the first week of April. So it's still going.
Jennifer or Pam, do you have a response?
No, I have a question. So if you cap the freshman class at 200, you're going to do 130 the next year? I mean, the problem is that you're going to have a massive class, and then the school only holds 628. No?
We'd go higher.
How much higher? 800?
Probably not.
Well, the classes that we bring in there aren't going to be significantly high.
The ones of the seniors, juniors, and sophomores going in? I know, but you've got to look forward to the, you know, 2021, 2022, 23, 24.
You can go higher.
Kevin?
If I just might be able to respond, then --
Kevin, come over here.
It's so great to have this kind of a conversation, frankly. But, you know, when we look at the classes that are graduating out, you know, we're going to have some of that capacity beyond that 157 over the next couple of classes, so we'll be able to bring in more. Plus, I think we're going to find, once we get into the building, that we're going to have some flexibility there. So the 628 isn't necessarily a hard number. I think we'll have some flexibility depending on the vocational programs that are selected and those types of variables. And I think once we get in there, we'll find that there's some flexibility.
So Ed, you have minimal in the offices.
We'll have some flexibility as we transition, as we increase the capacity. And that's why I think Jack and his team are working on that as we project out over the next three to four years.
Ford and then Alice?
It seems to me I've heard that 190, 190 acceptances have gone out.
We have sent out 200 acceptance letters so far.
My question then is, is the letters go out, then what do we do? What's our process after that?
Well, we received 105 letters back from students saying they want to be committed to Minuteman in the fall out of that 200. So we're still waiting on 95 letters to return. And so then we'll start the process. But there is a yield, and then we'll go from there.
Do we go out and -- I'm not saying go out and physically meet with them, but do we keep up with these students that have said they want to come, they've been accepted? And are we constantly in front of them because minds can change? And if so, what are we doing?
Well, tomorrow night, we have dinner with the teacher here as part of our recruitment effort. We originally thought we'd have a problem with all the kids, the amount of kids being here, but I guess it was a good problem to have. But three towns are sending their children to DC on their middle school trip, so they couldn't come to the dinner with the teacher. So we'll still have about 500 people here tomorrow night. I think about 125 students committed to tomorrow night's event, which is almost the size of the freshman class this year. And another 30 or 40 would have committed, but they're on DC trip.
So it sounds like we stay in front of, you know, just because we get an acceptance or even said, we don't sit back.
No.
It sounds like we're aggressively out there.
Absolutely. We have dinner with the teacher tomorrow night, then in May, we have the orientation. We typically do an event in the summer with our new freshmen, but this year might be difficult with the transition to the new building. But I don't think we're going to have to worry about numbers this year.
Jack, do you know what some of the activities that the liaisons have been doing?
Yeah, they've been doing a great job. We've did a mailing to over 3,000 people in our in-district towns, and those letters came from our parent liaison, so. And they've been doing parent-teacher meetings. I know Lisa did one. I know Lisa did one over in Lexington that George went to that went very well, so.
Alice is next, and then you can... Okay, thank you. Just interesting to hear what they've, they've been doing. Alice?
This is a really weird thing to say, but like Kevin said, it's a great discussion to be having, but one of the things that I heard when I was at the High Quality Pathways meeting was that they're not all crazy about the way that the schools necessarily handle waiting lists, because first of all, there's not clear that, you know, the numbers are correct, and then second of all, a lot of the kids don't find out what's going to happen to them until August, and so, and that's not great for them. So, we have an opportunity, because we don't have a waiting list, but we might just about have a waiting list, to do it better and to have a better process for that, so I just bring that up as an opportunity.
We already started that process this week.
Jim?
Yeah, I, I recognize I'm, that the concern for having, for having too large of a class, too large of a single class, and I think, I think, I think we have a, a little bit of a cushion for the next couple of years, because this freshman class is really on the small side, and so, if, I mean, it's close, it's, it's like 123 or so, and so, if you had 200 and 123, then, then it's not a problem until that small class graduates.
Right, don't forget that because of the way that the schools run, that freshman class is, is going to be sophomores and they're going to be with the seniors, whereas the incoming freshman class is with the juniors, and so, you have to kind of balance how many kids are in academics and how many kids are in shop at the same time.
Jeff?
It's a lot of, a lot of balls.
Actually, I'm not that worried at this point about it, but I'm more worried is that assuming that this is the trend, and there's no guarantee of that, right, we do have to, as Alice mentioned, have the policies in place to deal with it. Now's the time to start thinking, how are we going to deal with allocation of slots at the school and all that kind of stuff? So, we have to proactively think about it. I know that there's been thinking about it already, but these policies should come in front of the school committee for discussion as well, so we can kind of do as Alice says, do a, a better job perhaps than is, that has been complained about, and I've heard those complaints too. So, yes, it's a good, so we're not over anticipating, we're just saying it, due diligence means that we kind of have to think about it and put some policies in place in case we need them, and come up with some idea of when we're going to say, this is all we can take right now, because we don't, the, the yield is an unknown, could be smaller, unlikely, could be bigger, a little bit more likely. We just don't know, there are a lot of unknowns, we just want to anticipate as many possible eventualities as possible, because what we don't want to do is people to get angry at us or to say we're acting in an unfair manner. So, think about these things ahead of time, maybe we'll need them, maybe we won't.
And I think the benefit of having a policy is it's something you refer to, so if somebody has a question and they go, well, how, how come my neighbor's kid got in and mine didn't? So.
Okay. Is that something that you're working on at this point?
Well, yeah, we, George and I created a letter that we're going to send out to parents this week, but it does fall under the same lines as the admissions policy that we have now, so.
So, if you could, perhaps at the next meeting, Jack, clarify that for us and show, let us know what it is, that would be, be helpful.
Yeah, I think it just recently changed in the past couple of years to specify in-district students had first preference, so that's the way we're going to move forward.
The school committee's through admissions policy and hasn't been using that right now.
Jim?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, that the strict preference was part of the 2015 rule change by DESI, and then, and then the big question really, I mean, the big qual, policy question is, you know, do you have a scoring system to rank the applicants or do you do, or do you, or do you do MLottery? And that's, and that's sort of, I mean, that's a big, that's a big, I mean, that's a big choice that has, that has to be figured out.
Okay, anything else? Yeah, it'd be worth, that would be interesting for us to know too, what they, what the policy is or what the practice is if it's not yet in a policy, how students are selected, but also to find, I'm sure you're, you're handling them all gently, and that's, that's what I think I've been hearing that too. But it's a ni, certainly a nice position to be in after all these years, that we're now talking about, gee, what do we do with the next number of students? Alice?
Can we have that as an agenda item on the next meeting?
Sure.
That'd be great, thank you.
I couldn't hear you.
Town of what towns those applicants are coming from?
Okay.
I need to warn my town if they're really going to be an 18.
Anything else? Well, it's really certainly an exciting time after being in the school committee all, many, many years, and never having this as a, as a so-called problem, it's great. And thank you, Jack, for, and, and everyone working here and teaching here that's making this possible.
No problem, thank you.
Would you like, Jack, to rattle off the applicants from the 10 towns as of right now?
Sure.
Would you mind just going through the applicants from each member town?
Jennifer, Jennifer, he's going to go through and tell us about 10 towns.
I'll go nice and slow in case you want to write them down. Acton, 26. Arlington, 62. I'm sorry, make that 63. Belmont, 20. Bolton, 5. Concord, 9. Dover, 1. Lancaster, 17. Lexington, 23. Needham, 15. Stowe, 20. For a total of 199.
Thank you very much, and thank, we thank the school very much.
It probably should, Dave, it probably should be noted just so it, because I know it is talked about. Watertown, since we continually talk about Watertown, has a total of 25.
25? Any other significant numbers from the other towns?
Um, not, not really. No, a lot of singletons from a lot of towns that we know that aren't going to be approved through the regulations set forth, so.
Okay.
I'd have to add them all up, but maybe, maybe a dozen or so total, if that, 10.
Do you have their company from Los Angeles?
I can go through the out-of-district quick if you want me to. Billrica, 1. Boston, 3. Boxborough, 1. Burlington, 2. Carlisle, 2. Everett, 2. Framingham, 1. Hillsboro, 1. Hyde Park, 1. Lincoln, 4. Lowell, 1. Medford, 1. Melrose, 1. Newton, 3. Reading, 1. Sherburne, 1. Sterling, 1. Stoneham, 1. Sudbury, 6. Wakefield, 2. Waltham, 3. Watertown, 25. Waltham, 1. Wayland, 4. Wellesley, 1. Weston, 1. Wilmington, 2. Winchester, 1. Woburn, 6.
Wayland, 4. Sudbury, 6.
Yep. I'm thinking for.
Alice?
So, since the last time that I heard these or saw these, it looks like there's a handful,
somewhat close to 10 kids from the Shore Collaborative Communities? Are those actually kids that can come here, Boston, Medford, Waltham? No?
They, they won't be able to come here due to the regulation.
All right.
Just because the question was asked, a total of 18 from the former member towns.
Okay, 6, Sudbury, 4, Wayland. Okay, anything else? Thank you, Jack, very much. Okay, let's see, goal number five, nothing on, oh, I think Kevin, you were going to tell us about that, right? Kevin's going to talk about the, where the agreement is with Lexington.
Well, actually, the discussions with Lexington have been paused for the time being, until such time as we work through the request for proposal process, which was issued. So far, there have been eight interested entities in exploring more about the project. There'll be an informational meeting with those folks tomorrow, and proposals will be due on Monday, April 22nd, so that's where we're at right now.
And it was indefinitely postponed in a town meeting, the article wasn't discussed at town meeting, yes?
Can we make sure that the minutes reflect those pieces of information, that it's on pause and that, because if there's an RFP out, it's very important for the people who are responding to understand that Lexington is not, that we're not developing this specifically with Lexington, because that would make them disinclined to submit.
Can you respond to that, Kevin?
I think that's a fair point, we'll make sure that the record reflects that we've paused those discussions.
Okay, Jack, you have a report, and also you're going to add another, another field trip for students in the new agenda.
Sure. Our Skills USA students are seeking permission to attend the Mass Skills USA Leadership and Skills Conference. That's a Ma barle leaving on Thursday, April 25th, returning Sunday, April 27th.
Do I hear a vote to approve?
Motion to approve.
Not a vote, but a motion to approve, okay. Did you got that? Any discussion, any questions for Jack? Yes?
How does the number this year compare to the number of the last few years?
I would say it's about the same number of students, yep. I don't have the exact number, but similar.
Okay, any other question or comment? All in favor? All opposed? None, 9, 0, 9, 0, 0.
Great. Our environmental technology program is seeking permission to participate in an overnight field trip to the Down East Institute located in Beale's, Maine, leaving Minuteman on Monday, May 6th, and returning Friday, May 10th. And just before you do take a vote on that there, we're probably still going to do this trip, but we have a student that wants to go on this trip that has a medical situation, and we're trying to adjust the possible dates, but we plan on still going.
Motion to approve.
Got that, Julia? Okay. Any, any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Nine, any opposed? No, so it's 9, 0, 0.
And the update that you were speaking of, Dave, is obviously, once we move into the new building and this building comes down, we're going to be without a pool, and we met, I met with the folks over at Hanscom during February break, and then I submitted a letter not long after that asking for practice space at their pool, and we have not received any information back, although I did talk to one of the gentlemen over there that said we should be in good shape to be practicing over there. So, we won't have a pool to compete in, we'll have to travel to different pools, but at least we'll have a, hopefully have a pool to practice in every day over there.
Could you bring us up to date on what other sports, what they will be doing, where they'll be practicing and playing and competing?
We've been practicing and playing kind of everywhere, playing games away and practicing over here in Lexington for soccer and softball, and this year's softball team so far, you know, it's, it's soon, but we've been practicing right out here for a little bit, so it's been tough, but we've made arrangements.
Have any sports been, put on pause for next year?
No, no. That's not the plan.
Alice?
I think it's great that you found something for swimming, because it's really important to a lot of kids, so thank you.
It's been difficult, because a lot of the people that rent our pool are also seeking pool space, so.
Right.
We're lucky to get over there, hopefully, so shouldn't be a problem. Just can't have meets over there because of the security issues over there, so.
Okay, anything else? Anything else, Jack?
That's it, thanks.
Okay, Kevin, acceptance of scholarship funds, et cetera?
Thank you, you do have in your packet for your acceptance, the, a list of donations toward our general scholarship account. The list is provided on page 11 of the packet. Just a couple of comments, the donations were noted, were in the memory of Bruce Flood, our veteran automotive teacher, and the, the MPA made their, their donation towards the scholarship fund. We'll be looking for a vote to accept these as presented.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? 9, 0, 0.
We have no action on item B this month. On item C, it's a notification from the Minuteman Retirement Board under Mass General Law, Chapter 32, Section 103i. The retirement board shall contemplate and vote on a cost of living increase for retirees. Memo's in your packet on page 12. As part of the requirement for the retirement board to take this action, it's required that the legislative body, which is the Minuteman School Committee, be notified of this vote, which is scheduled for April 25th. It's based on a 3% increase on the first $13,000 of pensionable earnings received by our retirees. So, the maximum any retiree could make with a, with the maximum 3% adjustment would be $390 a year. This doesn't require a vote, it's for information purposes only.
Just to, I just also like to know that this is what teachers are also, people in the mass retirement system, that's also what they, they get, 3% on the first $13,000. You have, that's a look forward to, Jack. Jim?
Kevin, Kevin, what the time, what time is the meeting on the 25th, and is it going to be here?
It's at 4:30, and it will be in the business office.
Okay. And is the agenda going to include anything else, like, like a visit from a, from a PRIM rep or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
Okay, anything else there?
One more item under my report, Mr. Chair, and that's item D. I'd ask that you replace the page 13 that was included in your packet, which was provided at your, at your table today. It's titled revised as of April 9th. It's just to status where we are with our town meetings. As you can see, we have three towns that have approved the, the assessment for fiscal 20, and you'll see the schedule of tentative meeting dates where we expect to be on town meeting as we work our way through the, the town meeting season. This is just a, an update for the committee, and I'll update the committee again at the May meeting. Hopefully, we'll have our votes for a budget. We'll need seven.
Lexington, it was unanimous, that was also for the Lexington Public Schools budget, that it was, it's amazing, it's always amazed me, you know, they have this gazillion dollars in an, an article, and they go boom, scale right through, but you talk about 14,000 to remove trees and it takes all day to do it, I love it, I love town meeting. Anyway, Kevin did a very good job presenting the budget and his PowerPoint, and there are a couple of questions, but not just sort of for clarification, sort of friendly questions, and it sailed right through. So, thank you, Kevin, very much. Okay, subcommittee reports, school, school building committee update. Oh, I've got to move.
Just let me run through a few things. As you know...
It's too much.
There's going to be a school building committee and school committee tour on April 22nd. If you could be here at 5:15, basically in this area, we'll have apps for you and all that kind of thing, and we'll go out about 5:30. We're going to have our meeting at 5, so it's a 15-minute meeting, and usually that can happen pretty quickly. So, what to be doing with that? Jeff, we're on time, on budget, but we're now what I call in crunch time, and you can feel the pressure in our Wednesday meetings. You know, a lot of talk about how many people are working, and it's around 180, 190, but various trades are leaving and various trades are coming in, and it's just a lot of, the pressure has gone up considerably, and I would say the last week. in, I would say, the last week or so. And I think it's going to continue to go up because they're going to be done on time. Overhead doors have been installed in most of the shops, so they're now operative and going. VCT floors are being installed in the classrooms. So now we have floors that look like good school building floors, which is kind of neat going in. When you came in, you saw a construction sign about National Grid. National Grid, we have going up to where we'll meet National Grid. They're coming down, I believe they're coming down 2A right now, and we hope to be installed and active with National Grid within the next, I would say, 10 days. So that's worked out very well. Elevators will be going in in a couple of weeks. Basketball equipment, they were arriving on Saturday, I was out there, and they were arriving, bringing in the equipment, so we're going to be able to shoot hoops pretty soon. But that has to go in before we put in the wooden floors, which should be in a couple of weeks in the gym. Kitchen equipment is being installed, both for the cafeteria and for the students, the bakery and all that. Refrigeration units are installed, not hooked up, but they're now installed, so that's coming together. The courtyard planters are, I think they'll be almost done. They'll be done this week. And then the floor will go in in the courtyard, and they'll seal up the back part of the building. So that's going on. Case work is being installed. The science teachers are going to go crazy, I'm convinced, because when they go in and see all the cabinetry and all that, it really looks great. Tile in the bathrooms is going up, so they're now installing tile. All the units, as I think this week, there's going to be a crane this week, or maybe, no, this week, a crane's going to be here. So the final two units will be up on the roof, and we'll be able to get those activated. And there are those rooftop windows that are going to bring light in. One is already installed, and the other two will be done this week. So there's tremendous progress that you're going to see out there. It's really, to me, very exciting. So what we want to do is show you a film, and I'll talk about it at the end if I get this thing to work right. Work. That's not it. It's a good picture. Minuteman March over there, some on the right. Can you try this one? Let me just, I want to show that again, just because I think it's so cool. I think it's worth seeing again. Oh, there it is. I got it. I got it. So you went through the building. What was your impression when you went?
I was just saying, it's, I didn't have the impression before I was physically inside of just how spacious it feels. And it feels like you're walking through the middle of a public campus, because out those windows, of course, it's wood. I mean, in the middle, it's a spectacular feeling. And Ford's absolutely right about how the cabinetry works in the science rooms. It's clean and well thought out. It's spacious and respectful of teachers and students. It is really impressive. The only thing I'm not, I'm a little concerned about is in, I guess it's what you call, the student area with the cement steps. I can just see students jumping down cement steps, but...
Well, you're going to, that's going to change. They're going to put wooden floors on there, and they're going to sort of compartmentalize it and all that. So the students are so well behaved, it's not a problem. They're going to walk down the stairs. That's what I'm told. I bring up, I bring up sometimes these student concerns, and, you know, Kevin or Ed or somebody says, don't worry about it. We take care of all those things. It works. This film, I believe, is now on the website. It's on the website. I'll just tell you what I've done, because I had it before, and you can now get it. I've sent it to our superintendent, and the principal at the middle school gotten great remarks back from them. And they said they're sending it on the guidance. So that's happening. So maybe I'll get two students. That would be very exciting. And so I do that. I've sent it also, it's on our website in town. So you can do that also. And I've sent it to some key people in town. So I think the more we spread it around, we'll get the applications up another 100, which would be great. And so I think the movie is, that film is great, and Andrew Mudge does a good job.
Yeah.
So this came out probably like three or four days ago on the web, and...
It's on Facebook, yeah.
Yeah, but not just Facebook. So Alumni Network, it's on YouTube. And so I'm connected with any, anything that, if anybody searches on Minuteman on Google, I get notified on. And specifically Arlington Alumni have been devouring.
Really?
So it's, it's out there. And interestingly enough, there's a lot of people from DBC that are sharing stuff as well. So it's out there, it's streaming. And I think that's one of the elements about what we're doing differently now, is the community, and I've talked about this before, digital age, right? You've got to put the material in the hands of the community and let the people who are digitally affluent get it out there, because that starts the buzz. Because I started getting comments from people in town about, are there, you know, still, you know, applications? Do we still get in? Because they're seeing this, and now they're interested. So specifically, I think the visual augmented reality, where they're showing the 3D images and then the actual, you know, structures of where we're at, starts to get people saying, oh, this is a reality. It's not just PowerPoint and spreadsheets, and it's going to be another brick and mortar building. It sparks interest. And so I think the fact that people are now sharing it and doing it, and it's only been week one. So, yeah, stuff like this needs to keep going. What we, what we really need is the compilation of the multiple videos stitched together to see the progress kind of cobble together.
I think, I think that's Ed's ultimate goal with, working with Andrew, is to eventually have that story. But as you know, it's already on the website. You know, we have, I don't know, 12, 15 months of films already on there, plus our monthly reports that we get, the Building Committee. So if people want to go in, go for it. But I think that's the goal. When that will happen, I just don't know. I assume it'll probably happen more near the end. But Ed, I know, is exploring some other opportunities in that regard. So, you know, I think there's a lot that that's, that's going to be able to be used in years to come. What I thought was fascinating is, you know, we've all been pretty close to this. But when I saw that film, and I contacted Senwan Lee, who really did a lot of the design, I said, it really came alive for me, to be able to go in and see the construction, which I've seen, and now seeing that. And I've seen those before, those pictures before. But it came alive, and that's what's going to turn the kids on.
Alice?
Can we take 10th graders? 10th grader, yeah. So maybe there's an opportunity to put something on our website about 10th grade applicants, transfers. And then very soon after the freshman class is full, start advertising the calendar for the acceptances for the following year.
Ford, when you say you send it out to people, are you referring them to the website?
No, I actually have cut and paste and just sent it out there.
A link to it?
Yeah, because I'm not sure they're all looking at the website the way we all do.
But you got the link from the website?
I got the link and just put it on, and so...
That's what I'll do, too.
I think it's worthwhile, Lee.
Oh, definitely. I've done it before, and it's time for an update. But I'll take the link from the website as you did. Yes, Jeff?
So Ford, refresh my memory, Lee, the architect. I remember a day that it was that he who came in, that was the transition between our rough kind of building and all the things he had to come. He had a long list of things that would both reduce the cost and improve the building. And I remember that day, it's kind of a transition of when I kind of believed that this was really going to happen because of what he says, he's still involved with the project.
Well, he, you know, he joined the firm during this, during our process, and he was actually designing hospitals.
Oh.
And he came on and did it. But he's just an amazing talent. As a matter of fact, he has designed Needham's Police and Fire Buildings that they're working on. So he's the guy that's designed those. And so...
Right.
These guys are talented. They really are talented.
Some of them are. And you, I think I have to give a lot of credit to in the Building Committee for finding the guys who were talented, because I think the particular people we had do make a difference. And there are a lot of been, again, I don't know, I mean, I have trouble changing light bulbs. I'm not a good person to talk about building projects. But it does seem to me that there have been a lot of improvements and refinements in this along the way. And you look at the almost result and the price, it's a lot of money. But I think that you're getting a lot for your money. And I think that that's because of the team that you helped put together.
The team's incredible, but he's not here, so I'll pay him a compliment. If he was here, I wouldn't. But Dr. McQuillan is amazing, and they are just amazed with him, because Ed knows everything that goes into the building. He's been involved in construction, you know, he did it up in Vermont, and he did it out in the western part of the state. He knows the construction business, and that has been so valuable. And when he sits in a meeting and they start asking questions and talking about, Kevin and I, well, I can't speak for Kevin, but I don't know what they're talking about sometimes, but he's got it. And a lot of what's happened over the last 12 months, 24 months, I give him a lot of credit. You know, I'm just amazed about what he's contributed and how the team feels about him. I mean, it's, they, I've been told that they have never worked with a superintendent that has the knowledge that he does.
Good.
That's good.
High level of attention to detail. He's been...
He's...
Right on it. Yeah. Right down in going through each and every room, picking furniture and making sure everything's supposed to fit where it is. It's, yeah, he's been very, very, at a high level of detail when he reviews these.
I mean, we've caught a lot of money out of our FFNE budget to stay on budget, because we had to. And he's basically, I think he's worked with the staff, but I think he's really been doing a great job with it. So he deserves a lot of credit.
Two questions about the school. The top tier in the theater, what is, what is the top tier, if you know what I mean?
The fly loft?
Well, is that what it's all the way around?
All it is, is where the scenery is going to go up, it's 96 feet high.
Well, I don't think that's what, it looks, there's...
You're talking about what you saw, like a seating going around?
Well, look, it's, it looks like a walkway all the way around the top of the theater.
And there's seats. There's seats, about 200 people, and that's going to...
Even at the top, what I call the top tier.
Exactly. But that's also their access. There's going to be a grid that's going to go in sometime soon. They've already put the anchors from the grid to the ceiling down. And that grid is going to be, so the students are going to be working on that grid. And they're going to access it from those various levels. And that's where they put in the sound equipment, the lighting equipment, and all that. So that's going to be going in very shortly. And what I didn't say is on the floor, they're starting to work on the floor and put in the orchestra pit. They're starting to work on that. So, but the theater is, it's extremely intricate, and it's taking a lot of time and effort and...
And Mr. Don McCant waits to get in there with the drama group.
It's, I think it's going to be used a lot on the outside. I hope we charge the unions a lot of money to rent, to come out and teach their people.
And you know, one feature, there are a lot of features I like, but that open pathway that goes through, is where, goes through the student union, or, you know, I'm not sure where it, but it's a, it looks like a flyway going right through the, right through the school, the beginning, the front of the school.
You're talking about when you go in through those doors? They walked into the front door, and you went down a pathway?
No. This is one that you're walking across an open hallway, you might say, and you look down at some other, what else is going on in the school.
Oh, no, no, I know what you're talking about, when you're looking down at the gym. I think you, there are some windows as you walk down that?
The cafeterias, the cafeteria. I love that. I just love that walk. I love that, I just love that walkway. I love that, don't you?
You can't go to school there, I'm sorry.
I know.
But you know...
But I do, I think that's, I just think that's so...
There are windows on either side of the gym, looking down into the gym, and I'm trying to, I really think they oughta sell stools, and those could be box seats that they're gonna send some money on.
Yeah, I remember those, I remember those going through earlier, but it's just that walkway by the cafeteria.
There are a lot of things that are really cool.
Yeah, that, that's, that's one of my favorite places.
I never knew cosmetology needed those many, those many lights.
Okay, good. Anybody, anybody going on the tour on the 22nd? I'm gonna go on the tour with the 22nd. Good, good.
We have to be on time on this, so, because there's only gonna be one or two guides.
Well, thank you for the invitation. Also, I had one other question. When have they, have they started working on sculpting your face into that boulder out in the back of the school? Has that begun yet?
Well, the boulder gets some good conversation about what to do. I said I wanna put a teepee on, and somebody said, "Well, you'd get in trouble for that kinda thing."
A teepee? Did we... I think it'd be great to incise his face in it, yes.
Did we advise committee members of appropriate attire as part of that distribution?
Yeah, it went out in the email.
Okay, good, okay, okay, great.
Thank you for it, that was great, and I look forward to sending it up to people.
Well, it's only, you know, Andrew does, he's been a friend of my family's for a little time, it's a long time, but he does a great job.
He's done a good job all the way through. Anything else, any questions or comments about the, about the project for Ford? That it, Ford? Thank you very much. Okay. The OPEB Trust Fund Finance Committee update. Were, were you gonna present that, Kevin? I don't, where was Carrie? I mean, I...
Yeah, no, good. And, do you, do you briefly mention the summer school?
The what?
Summer school.
Oh.
I can, if you'd like.
Yeah, I guess it's a good segue from...
Yeah.
Okay, as we, one of the things we talked about at the finance subcommittee in relation to moving into the new building was, we were trying to coordinate the move over the summer and running our summer school programs, and it became very apparent during our move consulting meeting, meetings, that it was, it was just gonna be too difficult. It was, and, to be able to run both, so we made the tough decision to not run our summer school programs this year. We will be running the summer's edge program, because they use a very confined portion of the building, the gym and the, the pool area, and we'll run a driver's ed course, but we, we did have to make the decision not to run our summer academic programs and some of our other programs. That's gonna have an impact on the revolving account of about $140,000. So, there's $100,000 that the, that's included in the district budget that we allocate towards our administrative cost of revolving accounts, so the recommendation was that we apply that, that, that $100,000 line item to offset the loss for the, for the, for the summer program, so we'll need to identify another $40,000, so we don't run a deficit in that account. But I wanted to, we did talk about that finance subcommittee meeting, we wanted to report that.
Good. And then, and then... Any question about that? All right.
And then, we, that we just wanted to bring you up to date on a conversation that has been happening over the past three finance subcommittee meetings about the OPEB trust. OPEB, as you remember, is other post-employment benefits. It's primarily health insurance premium coverage that we share with, that we share with retirees. It's a, it's a vested, it's a vested benefit, so we currently have, what, about 150 active employees that are sort of working towards, towards this, looking forward to it in, in their, in their retirement, as well as another 100 or 110 currently, currently retired, retired members. The idea is that, you know, when you, when you think of it as a cost of your current compensation for your current staff, it's, it's, it is a greater expense than what we're paying out in cash, and so the idea is that the OPEB trust fund is a place where we can put away money and let it, let it be invested for a long period, so that future school committees, when the balance of, balance of retired and active employees flips and needs, needs a lot more cash in that year's budget to pay for the health insurance for all, for the retired, for the retired employees, that they will have this, they will have this fund to be able to draw on. And they'll draw on it by, you know, through the annual budget process, it'll, it'll take a, take a vote of the school committee to take money out of the OPEB fund and put it through the usual budget process where it can pay for that, for that line item to cover the current year's in insurance premium payments for the retirees. And so, really, the way to think about it is, is, is that it's a, that it's just another kind of a reserve fund that we should be thinking of with a long-term investment, investment policy, and, and how much we put into it right now for the past couple of years, we've put in $50,000 in, in every budget process. So, it's up to $200,000. You know, if you compare that to the $13 million that we have set aside for pensions, it's, you know, it's, it's, it is a different scale, but it's, but it's, but it's similar, similar, in, similar in nature. And Kevin brought this to our attention starting in January, because as, as this background paragraph says, there was action taken by the school committee back in 2015 to, bless you, to, to establish the trust fund under, under a section of, of the Massachusetts laws, and then, and then there was a draft of a trust agreement that was necessary to actually bring life to this, to this, to this, to this trust fund. There was, there was some disagreement about what, what kind of trust fund should go forward at that time, and so the matter was basically tabled. And that was in the summer of 2016. In the fall of 2016, the existing law was thrown out and a brand-new law was brought in, and it was, and, and, and that, that the new law actually is a sort of a simpler, cleaner law, and was part of this much larger bill that, that changed a lot of municipal finance rules for, you know, for towns and for schools. And, and so, we sort of realized that, that, that we're dealing with a, with a, with a brand-new law, and that the new law actually is sort of closer to the spirit of what some of, some of the concerns that, that, that were raised by the school committee in, in 2006, 2016. So, so in terms of sort of the steps going forward, and, and there's no motion here for us to act on them tonight, but the, but the, but the, but the first step is to sort of re, revisit the acceptance of the law under the new language, and to take a, a couple of, a couple of steps, basically to name the district treasurer as the custodian for the trust fund, and to also select one of the investment standards that the, that the trustee should, should follow, and that's, and that's spelled out in the law. And then the next step would be to get a new version of a trust agreement from the lawyers, and, and, and if we're satisfied with that, to, to accept that. And then the, and then the third thing would be to have an investment policy statement to sort of guide the actions of the trustees in terms of managing this. Currently, this $200,000, which, which is, which is to be invested with a long-term, long-term nature. And then, fourth, we could talk about at some future date whether $50,000 is, is, is the right amount that we should be putting in, but that's, that's, that's a definitely, definitely fourth. So, so we're really, on, on page 16, in the middle of that, is the motion we were talking about at the March meeting, that sort of did this first step of, 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 of making an acknowledgement that the law has changed, but we, but we, but we still want to accept that, and to do the, to do the designation of treasurer, and, and to use the prudent investor rule as, as the standard. And we first thought in March, we would ask for a vote on that tonight, and then take that to the lawyers and say, "Can you, can you write a trust agreement from it?" But in subsequent conversations that Kevin and I had, that we decided, you know, we don't need, we don't need this vote to get the lawyers working on the trust agreement, and so it probably makes sense to, to sort of bring that all back as one, as one package. And then finally, I just wanted to share the, the first draft of an investment policy statement that we were looking at, and the idea there is to really have a very tight, a very, a very tight, a set of, set of restrictions on how this $200,000 should, should be invested, and basically just treat it like it's a long-term endowment, and use just a very small number of, 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 of passive, very well, very well diversified in, in, in the DEX funds, and just sort of let it, let it be. Kevin, do you have anything else, else to add?
Just a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to thank Jim for, for his work and research on this. It was extremely helpful in getting it to this point. We didn't go through the, the memo in detail, but you will find that, as Jim was talking about the recommendations, it was after some consideration of some other options that we had, as far as, well, naming the district treasurer as the trustee, there are other options. The school committee could name a 13-member board of trustees, and I don't think we really wanna do that, and, you know, you know, or have that responsibility come into the Minute, the Minute Man Retirement Board, and that is, because of the mission of the retirement board, that may not align exactly with what we're trying to do with the OPEB trust, so having a, an appointed district treasurer under the, under the, under the oversight of the school committee made some sense. Also, in terms of the investment policy, I really think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good policy to move forward with when we have that conversation. We're using the so-called prudent man rule rather than the Massachusetts legalist. On the, on the Health Trust, which we're a member of with, with three other vocational schools, we just, we just adopted an investment policy just about a year ago for a $5 million portfolio that we're managing, and we have an investment consultant with us, and we adopted the Mass Legalist, only because we just went to a self-funded model, and I think the trustees wanted to cautiously go into this world of self-funding and investing at a, at a very, in a very deliberate pace. And we've engaged Rockland Trust to be our investment advisor, and they have, they're managing under the, they're managing under the legalist, but I think with each presentation, they do talk about how restrictive it is. So, I think using the prudent man rule gives us a little bit more flexibility, and, and as the trust grows, we may need to call in some more resources. Another piece of this is we did advise Alice, we, we wanted to get Alice involved early on, because of the nature of the investment policy impacts the existing investment policy that, so that may require a change, and that, that got us engaged in some conversations about reporting requirements and things like that, that we'll continue to work through with the, with the finance subcommittee, and we'll bring that back at the next meeting.
So, has it gone to the lawyer yet?
I've made the request, told them that we will be contemplating it, yes.
Jeff?
One question is, I don't know how the $50,000 a year relates to, does it allow us to keep current, or are we continuing to increase the size of our deficit at the range, at the rate of $50,000 a year?
Okay. The, the, that the current, when you, when you take a look at the audited statements, one of the footnotes, they talk about service costs, which is basically what it would take to stay current. And, and the most recent statement, the, the service cost was somewhere between $1 million and $1.2 million, so $50,000 is just a placeholder.
A million a year you'd have to put in to stay current?
Now, now, I would, I would, I mean, I thought about this some, and, and this is the conversation for later, but I think the idea is that, you know, if you invested, I mean, that if you, if, that if you budgeted half of that service cost and then, and then invested it for the long-term growth, that would probably work for the future, future, future school and committees. But $50,000 is, is, is just 5, 5% or less of...
That's just a reminder of what we're supposed to do. It has nothing to do whatsoever with the real amount, okay? The other comment I have is I looked in the, your potential investment policy, and it is beyond prudent. It is supremely super prudent, okay? The only comment I would make is that at the, at the 70/30 level, I would be, if you were to, I guess the amount of money you have is so little that it almost feels silly saying this, but as a general rule, the only thing you'd be worried about is if you're investing all your money at the wrong time, if you can invest all at once, as opposed to little by little. And it could be argued that there's some risk as to now, or in the near future, would be the wrong time, like the height of the market, which is like the only time you don't wanna invest the money. So, depending on when we actually do invest it, I'd wanna maybe not invest it all at once, but kind of dollar-cost average-ish it, although it's so little money that, you know...
And it's, and, and this is, this is some, this is a fund where we are going to be investing every year through the budget process, so it's gonna be...
Yeah, yeah, so that part's fine, it's just that if, you know, it's, it's so little that maybe I don't care, but I'm just a little bit concerned anybody starting off taking a big chunk of money and sticking it in the market right now, I'd be perhaps a little bit nervous, that they're just throwing their whole thing in the wind.
As practice, yeah. Alice?
I'd just like to say, my, just so the whole committee knows, that my interest in any change would be the reporting requirements, that reporting be made to the school committee, not to the finance subcommittee, because our public records are more public than the finance subcommittee's records tend to be, and the oversight of the whole school committee, really, if you're depending on three members of finance subcommittee or four, however many, that really can sometimes not be the best method.
Anything else?
Thank you very much, Kevin. Thanks for finding us, Kevin. I know how painful it is to work through this issue. My head hurts, just...
We probably, I think many of us hear about OPEB at our town meetings, at least I always, every year, comes up about how much should we invest and...
That's the time I have to go to the bathroom when something like OPEB comes up.
Okay. Anything else about OPEB? All right. You'll be hearing more about it at, at our school committee meetings, too. Pam, approval of the draft minutes of March 12th?
I move that we approve the draft minutes for March 12th, 2019, as presented.
Any discussion or comment? Alice?
I'll just remark that it is noted in the minutes of the last meeting that Dr. McQuillan mentioned that we had paused our negotiations with Lexington, so it's good to have that there and in the next set as well.
Okay.
And to change that, that goal. I think that's what we discussed.
Okay, all right. Yeah. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? I'm sorry, so eager. We, yeah. Okay, anyone opposed? Now do we hear a motion to adjourn?
[inaudible]
All in favor? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.